And welcome to the Select Board meeting of July 1st, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Present tonight is Jo Still, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Sarah Corbett, and Marcus Gomes.
And excused our—
Excused our Town Administrator Derek Sullivan and Town Council Rich Bowen.
Thank you. I declare that there is a quorum present. Hmm. Which one of you is going to volunteer to lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Smith.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just.
Thank you. Okay. Residents' comments. Is there anyone here who chooses to speak to this board about something that is not on the agenda? Do you see anybody in the audience? No. Your audience?
Online.
Online? Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Announcements. We have a presentation this evening from a bunch of people. Howie and Claire Smith, Sherri Quirk, Norma Scoggin, Denise Makin, Rich Wolverton, and Sharon Elder. Did I miss anybody?
Al.
Al. Oh, I wrote Al and Denise. I couldn't read my own handwriting. Sorry about that. Why don't you guys step forward? I'm sorry about that.
Thank you for having us here, and we're really excited about being here tonight. Claire Smith, I am president of the Wareham, Mass—Wareham, MA to Wareham, UK organization, the Twining Committee. To my right is Sherri Quirk, Norma Scoggin, and then you introduce the rest of the committee. Many of us on the committee visited Wareham, UK last month. No, actually, now we're in July, the end of May. So we had an incredible, an incredible welcome. We flew into London and spent four days, and then we went to Waterloo Station and took the train down to Wareham, where we were met by our host families. And the host families brought us to their homes, got us settled in, fed us a nice evening meal. And then the next morning, we, at nine o'clock, went to the Wareham Town Hall, which they called the Corn Building, for a welcome breakfast ceremony with coffee and Dorset apple cake, which is their signature for the town. And they actually have a town crier in all her regalia, who opened the reception and introduced the mayor, the new mayor, who had just been elected, Zoe Gover. She's 35 years old. And the town clerk is also a younger person, which was really nice to see. And they read their welcome statement to us. And then the town crier introduced Sherri, with the bell ringing and all the regalia of being introduced, where Sherri presented the letter that you had supplied us with before we left. After that, we made some presentations, and because they're coming over here in 2026, our thought was to have them come during the fall cranberry harvest season. And many of you know that the former mayor was over here in October, and we took them up to the cranberry bogs, explained all of our cranberries and what our agriculture is all about. And Charles Donnelly was brave enough to get in the bog. Consequently, one of the gifts that we brought was a coffee mug with him, with his picture in the bog. And he started showing that around, which created a bit of excitement. And we now probably have about 20 people coming over in the fall, who are very excited about learning about our cranberry season and our cranberries. And so we presented them with different things, one of which was a wooden, smaller version of a cranberry scoop and some information and books on cranberry picking. We had note cards with all different versions of the stages of cranberries and the blossom and the picking and that kind of thing. So we had different things that we gave them. One of the things that impressed us, and I'm hoping—if you remember when the mayor was over here in the fall, she was given patches from the fire department, the police department, the proclamation that we did at the reception. They now have a Wareham wall, where anything that will be sent to them or given to them, it will be displayed on that wall. So we're hoping that we can reciprocate in some way, somehow, to find a place as well as this moves forward over the years, and we have different things that come. We would like to display it so that the people of the community would be able to enjoy what we had enjoyed. So we spent the next couple of days touring around. Our host families showed us all around. We had a couple of very nice dinners. They had a farewell party for us on the night before we left. Oh, let me just back up to the gifts, because I want to present you with something as well. So one of the things that we presented to them was a challenge coin. On one side of it is the Wareham Town Seal. On the other side is the Wareham Town Seal. So in my remarks at the ceremony, I explained to them that going forward, not only due to the proclamation, but we are forever bound together as communities by our towns. So going forward, there was a very laudable gasp in the audience. So we presented these to the mayor, to the council members, and to our host families. When they come over here, the host families here will receive a token for being a host. And so, you know, we will make sure that these make their way around as we go forward, so that people recognize that we now do have a sister city and we are bound together with them. And I have to tell you, we have a lot of planning that we're going to have to do and a lot of thinking to figure out what we're going to do for them, because we had the royal treatment. It was absolutely amazing. So on the night before we left, they had a farewell party for us. And at that ceremony, it was the twinning committee. The mayor came with her husband and presented a proclamation, which I had Sherri sign. I thought it was more appropriate to have a former selectman sign it than myself. But I'm going to have Sherri speak to the proclamation to present it to you. And then I actually brought a photo, so that you can enjoy what we saw of her receiving this proclamation on behalf of the town. So I will leave that with you as well.
So what I'll say just briefly, though, the town crier. It's hard to describe how loud first the bell and then the voice of the town crier is. She has a town crier outfit. They have actually town crier contests to pick out the best town crier among the various town criers. So if you ever have the chance to be introduced by the town crier, think twice. It did not set off the noise alarm on my watch, but I'm really shocked it didn't. And so then, at our final reception, the mayor came, Mayor Zoe Gover, and what she did was to take our letter and their sentiments and to weave them into one document. And so we both signed it, and so I'll read that for you now. Proclamation. Whereas the town of Wareham-Dorset, United Kingdom, and the town of Wareham, Massachusetts, United States, share not only a name, but also a spirit of friendship, cooperation, and community. And whereas a formal twinning arrangement was established between our towns on the 21st of October, 2024, marking the beginning of a valued partnership founded on shared heritage and mutual respect. And whereas the citizens of Wareham, Massachusetts, have demonstrated their commitment to this relationship by undertaking a goodwill visit to Wareham-Dorset between the 20th and 23rd of May, 2025. And whereas this visit has further strengthened the ties between our communities, providing an opportunity for cultural exchange, friendship, and the celebration of our shared identity. Now, therefore, we, the representatives of the town of Wareham-Dorset, United Kingdom, do hereby extend our heartfelt thanks to our counterparts and friends in Wareham, Massachusetts, United States, for their visit, their warmth, and their continued commitment to this twinning partnership. Be it resolved that this proclamation stands as a lasting symbol of our appreciation of the strong enduring connection between our two Warehams. We look forward to many more opportunities for exchange, celebration, and cooperation in the years ahead. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and affix the official seal of the town of Wareham-Dorset on this 22nd day of May, 2025. And it's signed by both counterparts. And so we will—we have left a copy with the clerk. And I will also say that we had the opportunity to stay with Charles, who was the mayor at the time escort when they visited us. If you didn't meet Charles, you must be a minority of people in Wareham, because I think that he met just about everybody and knows everybody in Wareham, England. At one point, Norma—we went to see the rugby field and the rugby team. Well, the team wasn't there. The field was, and the field organizers were. At some point, you mentioned how nice it would be to have a jersey from the rugby team. So Charles disappeared for a little while, and he came back.
Oh, that's cool.
So shall I take over?
Yes.
This is a—an exact replica of one that is currently being framed. We had hoped to have it ready tonight to present formally to you. But the twinning committee has paid to have a jersey like this framed to be displayed, hopefully in a nice prominent place in Town Hall. And you'll notice—if you can see it carefully—it may be hard to see on the camera, but their mascot is a swan. It's actually a combination of two nearby towns, Wareham and Swanage is the other town, and it is—they are the Swans. So we will have that for you in a few days. Unfortunately, didn't quite have time to get it all done in time. I wanted to say just one other thing, make sure everyone understands, that the people who went on this trip did so at our own expense. This was not paid for by the town. It was not paid for by even the committee. We all bore our own expense. But it was an absolutely fabulous experience, very kind people, a beautiful, beautiful old town from Saxon time, including Viking walls that surround the town, earthen walls. One of the things they're proudest of, that maybe they didn't mention when they were here before, was that T.E. Lawrence, Lawrence of Arabia, actually spent his final years in Wareham. And in fact, that's where he died, in a motorcycle accident. And there's a café where he used to sit in the window and write when he was doing his writing. And we visited his grave, which was very, very interesting and adorned with flowers. So I highly recommend that people in the town get involved in this. This is—a this is separate from the official town of Wareham, obviously. It is a private nonprofit. But we welcome the opportunity to work with the town, bringing these people in and showing them that we are also a wonderful town.
Yeah. And just to mention about Charles and his outgoing personality. He and Sue and the mayor and the mayor's husband went to the Trooping of the Colors in London. And I don't know if you're aware of what that is, but it's a huge event. The king and queen attend, the princes and everything.
It's the king's birthday.
The king's birthday. And after the event, they went to a local pub. And it's—as Sherri said—
As one does.
He's very outgoing and very friendly. He got to talking to three couples who were at the pub, who are from Wareham. I have photos of them, but I do not have names.
You don't have their names.
So I am hoping that if they see this, that maybe they'll step forward and let us know that they were there, because if they were willing to go to London, we would love to have them take the next trip and go to Wareham. We think it would be fun. They could go back and meet Charles and Sue and the mayor. Just one last thing. They have a magazine called Love It Local. This particular edition has a story about the mayor's visit. Our visit just came out last week, and I have copies on the way. So as soon as we have the one of our visit, I'll make sure you get a copy of that as well. But really, a nice story about twinning, and they're twinning with both Germany and France, and then the mayor's visit here. And so I'll leave that with you as well. We get several copies, because when I went four years ago, I also was in that. So one of our members decided to take a subscription, so that we make sure that we continue to get these. But we had a marvelous trip, and we want to thank you. One of the things, too, and I know that the town administrator is not here, one of the things that we brought over was a framed print of the history of Wareham. And so that is going up on their wall, and they were very intrigued with that and our history and learning about our history. And I don't want to take the time, but at some point, if I meet you, ask me about the banker and Mr. Bessie that went over in the late 1800s and how that all evolved, because there was a story to that as well. But there is just so much. And, you know, we encourage people, get involved. They'll be coming over here. We want to make sure that, you know, people get to enjoy them as we did enjoy being with them. And then the following year, we hope to send a larger contingent of Wareham visitors to Wareham. So we want to thank you for making this happen and getting us off the ground to get this established. We've made wonderful friends. We keep in contact constantly on the WhatsApp, because it's free. We can FaceTime, we can call, and it doesn't cost anything. So it's just absolutely wonderful to have new friends. I will say that our host wanted to lock my husband in the car, because she did not want him to leave. The two of them just bantered back and forth, and they have a lot of fun. So she—we actually stayed the next week. So it's a great opportunity, and we invite anybody to make sure that they get involved and have the opportunity to go over. And you can go over anytime. I'm sure that we could find a host family for anybody that wanted to travel, you know, before then.
Question?
Awesome.
I had a quick question. Well, first, thank you guys for doing this and for the reporting. This is a great story, and thank all of you for getting involved. Are you looking for host families here?
Yes. I learned today that we probably, as of now, have 12 couples that are definitely interested, three more possibly, and maybe four more who are thinking about it. So we probably are going to be looking, I would say, for about 20 host families.
Yes, and what does that entail?
Basically, with a host family, we're looking forward to hopefully raising some funds, so that we can go to the airport, pick everybody up in a van or a bus, so that individuals won't have to take their vehicles to go get them. But once they arrive, you will stay with a host family. You will make sure that they—you will write back and forth ahead of time. We will connect you with somebody that has your interest. You know, a white person, maybe teachers or teachers, you know. And then what we did is our committee sat down and decided, okay, what do we want to see and what do we want to do when we're over there? And then sent over to them, these are the things that we're interested in. Like you have Stone Edge, you had Salisbury Cathedral, you had—what else did we do?
There was a castle.
Corf Castle.
Corf Castle, a ruined castle close by.
Yep. So there—you know, so the same thing here. I think the one thing that we learned is we would like to do things more as a group rather than with individual hosts. So we would kind of like to maybe make sure we can get a bus or something, that we can do things. When they were here in the in the fall, we took them to the Bailey Museum, we went to Plymouth Plantation, we took them to New Hampshire to the Fall Foliage, we got them in the cranberry bogs. So as a host family, you know, it would be up to you to join us in those expeditions, enjoy their company, enjoy our company, hopefully. And basically, you know, it would be up to you to feed them breakfast, maybe supper at your host expense. Their food is very different from what we have. I know my experience having them here, I was a little nervous about what am I going to feed them, but they love our food. They absolutely love our food. And I had a thought today that maybe we would do a clambake or something like that, a clamboil or something. So we've got some thinking to do.
And if I can interrupt, and the committee will be planning whatever activities there are. So there'll be plenty of lead—you know, lead time for people to understand what would be expected of them. But primarily, you know, a place to sleep, breakfast, maybe some meals, although not every meal.
I'd be interested in helping out with a clambake. I think that'd be fun, if we can figure out how to do like one of the old-fashioned ones with a canvas. Sorry, if I'm too far away. I love the—you know, one of the old-fashioned ones with the canvas, the seaweed, the rocks.
Authentic, authentic, keep going, clambake.
Yeah. I think that's the thing that they enjoy the most and why they love the cranberry harvest so much, is it's very different from what they do. And we enjoyed seeing what they have that's very different from what we have, the much older buildings and, you know, the—they have a beautiful key, which actually is not that unlike the Wareham River, but a spot where, you know, people come up by boat, and there are restaurants and pubs and things like that. Yes, there are pubs everywhere.
And actually, Swanage, Howie and I spent a whole day at Swanage. Reminded me so much of our onset, so much of our onset, beautiful coastline, big pier, lots of shops. We spent the whole day there enjoying, you know, just sitting. And actually, I met the gentleman whose grandfather buried Sir Lawrence of Arabia. In the course of a conversation that we got into, that came out. So it's just—it's just incredible. But there's—you know, the history over there is old history. There's so much to see. But we have our own history, and we're looking forward to sharing that with them as well.
And you are a 501(c)(3), so are you going to be having any fundraising events?
Yes, we are. And I've applied for a couple of grants that are in the works. We're hoping that maybe in the fall, we would like to do a public presentation with a lot of our photos on PowerPoint, you know, to show people what their town looks like, what things that we got to see. You know, when you talk about Corf Castle, or you talk about—John and Marie took us down to Bath, to the Roman Baths. I thought we were going to see broken up stones. No. This was built in 69 AD, and it's still there. And it was incredible to say, this is so old, and here we are looking at a piece of history where the Romans would make pilgrimage to come. Corf Castle, the same way.
The town is actually one town over from Poole, which has the second largest natural harbor in the world, after Sydney, Australia. It's—it's just really—the what you can learn and see is endless.
It's amazing, so.
And it's just a little tiny town.
It's a very small town.
Very small. You can walk the whole town and see everything in a few hours, which—
Unless you're with Charles.
Unless you're with Charles.
And meet everyone.
We did not—I think the rest of the group did not get to walk the Viking Wall. That was one of the things that was planned, but it did rain that morning, so they did not get to do that. But that's another thing. There's just so much to see and do, as there is here. We just have to figure out—you know, it's a sharp period of time that they'll be here. What do we want to want to see and—
What do we want to show off?
Yeah. What do we want to show off, so.
No, thank you for your work on that. That is amazing. I know we've had discussions about that trip, and it's certainly something I'd be interested in going out there. Does any help any of us can do, especially myself? I would think showing them the cranberries is one of the biggest ones around here.
That's still over a year away, so we have a lot of planning time.
We've got time, hopefully.
I actually think it was great when you guys had them come in the fall. I actually was invited there, and I think that's really great what you guys have started. And I hope you guys continue in stride.
Just a quick thing, and I forgot to mention about Al and Denise are educators, and they will be working on connecting our schools with the Wareham schools. Actually, it's not exactly in Wareham, but their school system. We hope to get the high school, the elementary school, whether it's just pen pals to start out with, but to work it into exchange students. So that is also one of our goals that we're—we will be working on. I know we have a lot of interest from the school department here. It's getting the school department over there interested that we probably have to do a little work with. But we are very focused on doing that as well. We think it's a great opportunity. Al, as a former superintendent of schools, and Denise, a teacher, they certainly, you know, have the connections and the thought process of how that's all going to work. And so they'll be working on that as well. So that's another project that we'll try to undertake and make sure that we see that happen.
I just have two questions. One, do you have an address that people can send their questions to, that they could reach out to you?
It's Wareham—is it wareham.twinning?
Wareham twinning.
Wareham twinning at yahoo.com. Yeah, yahoo.com.
And the second question, which is really fascinating. How did you get a cranberry scoop over there? Who's suitcase did it?
It was a miniature. It wasn't an antique one, trust me.
No questions, we'll cut you in the wash.
Okay.
The one disappointment was we saw no hedgehogs.
Yes, no hedgehog. They're very proud of their hedgehogs. They have holes in their fences for the hedgehogs to get through.
I do have one more question. I've seen a town crier in Provincetown, because they still have one. I would kind of like somebody who's tall and can project his voice and who doesn't mind dressing up in period costume. No, I'm talking about—
Howie. Can we get Howie an outfit?
Yeah, we'll have to get Howie an outfit. Jackie Hall, who is their town crier, is absolutely incredibly friendly and wonderful, and she really does a great job. And I'm sure that when she comes over, she could probably bring her outfit. I know the mayor can't bring her gold chains. I mean, she has one that she could wear that's not quite as fancy as what she wears when she's over there, because she can't take it out of the building.
Hundreds of years old.
But I'm sure Jackie—we could entice Jackie to bring hers over. Maybe we could get her to play her role as well. She's very friendly, very, very nice.
My warning stands, though. If she brings her bill, especially.
It is.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. And you're going to be leaving some stuff with—yes. You need to—we need to have you speak into the mic, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm a retired middle school principal, not superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the promotion.
Anytime.
You have to—yeah, speak into the mic, Mr. Makin.
Sorry. I'm a retired middle school principal, not superintendent. Thank you for the promotion. But we did a twinning operation in Marshfield about 20 years ago. In Japan, it was very successful. So I'd like to see that happen here, between Wareham and Wareham, in some capacity.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just one for the town administrator.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are a couple of appointments. Ms. Corbett?
I move to appoint Nancy Rice as a member to the Board of Library Trustees with the term to expire June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
And Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye. It is so. Next.
I move to appoint Lori Benson as a member to the Community Events Committee, term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
No.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? No. It is so. Three to two. Licenses and permits. We have an application for Popeyes, and we—
He's, yeah, he's representing it tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Could you identify yourself with the record, sir?
Okay, so my name is Kalpas Mandalia, but I represent you, Amish Parik.
Okay.
For license for common Vic.
Thank you. And where is this going to be located?
Is Crafton, near, you know, like a gas station.
Across from Walmart.
Across from Walmart?
Yeah, yeah. Near, yeah.
The paperwork is in order. Do any of you have any questions? And your name again is, I'm sorry?
Yeah, my name is Kalpas Mandalia.
Can you spell it?
Yeah, sure. K.A.L.P.S. in Peter, Edward, Sam, Harry, and last name is Mango, Apple, Nancy, David, Leah, India, Apple.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but we need to have it for the record.
Yeah, sure.
Is there, are there any questions on the application? This is an application for a common Vic, which enables you to serve food on the premises or to have people take it out.
I'm overly excited for this, so.
Okay.
Actually, is there a gluten-free option there?
Yeah.
We're ready to show you.
I did, and I, yes. And I have, this is actually for Nancy. Could you spell your name one more time, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so my first name is K. K is in King, F for Apple, Larry, Peter, Edward, E for Edward, S for Sam, H for Harry. This is my first name. And last name Mango, Apple, Nancy, David, Leah, India, Apple.
Thank you.
I move to approve the application for an annual common Vic or license under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Laws. Wareham Chicken LLC, DBA Popeyes, at 2408 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Massachusetts 02576. Capous Mandila?
Yes, yes.
Manager.
No.
Nope. Owner.
Yeah, representative right now.
Okay.
And because right now, they, you know, like, you know, training, so just I came here for, you know, presents.
All right.
Proxy, like a proxy.
Okay, as a proxy. On behalf of.
Motion made and seconded is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. The paperwork won't be ready until sometime next week, because Town Hall is closed Thursday and Friday this week because of the holiday. So, they'll be getting, they'll let you know when it's ready to pick up.
Okay, so probably next week is, can I, no, we can open on next week, probably in the 10th or 12th.
Have you had all of your inspections from the Building Inspector and the Board of Health and the Fire Department?
Yeah, I think it's almost done, but you know, I have no idea.
So.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the license is granted when all of those things have been signed off, and the office will let you know.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I move to approve the application for an annual common Vic or license under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Laws, pending inspections and paperwork. Ms. Lisa's New Orleans Cuisine LLC, doing business as Ms. Lisa's New Orleans Cuisine, 208 Rear, Main Street, Wareham, 02571. Elise Zarcaro, manager.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve is read into the record. Just for the public's knowledge, we've already approved their other licenses. This was an oversight on their part, not applying for the common Vic, but they were here this evening to represent themselves. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Thank you.
I vote to approve the application for a change of.
You move to approve.
I move to approve the application for a change of doing business for annual all-alcoholic restaurant license, common Vic or license, and entertainment license held by Retro Grade, Retro Cade LLC, 176 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571, from Retro Cade to.
That's supposed to be rewind.
Rewind.
I know, but it's R-W-N-D.
But that's what it is.
And I'm sure you say it, rewind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Pending all inspections?
Pending all inspections and paperwork.
Motion made and seconded. This is simply a name change. All the other paperwork is in order. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And on C, the parking and signage on Storer Street. Storer Street is the road that borders one portion of Lopes Playground and Field. I met with the Chief of Police and Dave Menard the other day, because the parking lot that's in front of the playground will be paved later on. But there's also another area on Storer Street that the town actually owns. And Mr. Menard believes he can make a parking lot with probably up to five, maybe eight, parking spaces on an angle. Storer is a really narrow street, and they've been having problems with people parking there. And there's a fire hydrant right down, you know, 100 yards down the road, and it's impossible for first responders to get down the road. And it's also important for residents to be able to get down the road. So, what I asked them to do was make a recommendation, and their recommendation was the motion that Ms. Corbett is going to read.
I move to place, I move to place appropriate signage, blah, 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 as decided, yeah. I move to place appropriate signage on Storer Street, which will be decided by the Municipal Maintenance Department and the Police Department upon completion of the additional parking.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so.
I move to place appropriate signage on Storer Street, which will be decided by the Municipal Maintenance Department and the Police Department upon completion of the additional parking.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Thank you. Item D is not on the agenda, and I don't have any 48-hour business, no town administrator's report. So, let's go back to announcements, if we have any, as well as liaison and initiative reports. So, Mr. Still, could you go first, please?
There would be no announcements from me today. Are we jumping right to liaisons, or are we getting?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, do both.
No one else?
Yeah.
So, tonight, I'll be talking about the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's an interesting committee. They start at 6:30 p.m., the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. There's no mission statement listed online, but they're basically there to interpret, imply any zoning bylaws, enforce state laws and local laws. If you're looking for variances, I mean, what's not usually seen on the planning board usually goes to ZBA first. They are consisting of seven members, two associates currently. I'm not sure they have any vacancies, though involvement with the board could just be simply sitting there, sitting there for a couple of meetings and learning more. I prefer people to sit in there in person. The discussions at ZBA tend to go very long and very lengthy, and you can learn quite a lot into that. You can find all their past meetings on YouTube, and really just want to get involved with more of the deeper level planning-wise in town, I'd suggest listening to a ZBA meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Chadwick? Any announcements?
I do not.
Any liaison report?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Gomes?
No, I don't have any announcements or any information on the liaison positions.
Okay.
No announcements, but I, we just had a meeting last night of the Wareham Community Events Committee, and I believe that we are always in search of members. The mission of the Wareham Community Events Committee is to provide financial support for programs developed by local nonprofit or town-sponsored organizations which are of mutual interest to the tourists and residents of Wareham and onset. And in fact, Claire Smith came before us last night to talk about possible funds for their organization. So, it's a good group, so we're always looking for new members. Oh, they meet on the fifth Monday of every month.
Huh?
Yep.
The fifth Monday?
The fifth one. I'll double back on that.
Four Mondays in a month?
Well, there might be five, but there aren't always five.
Hang on.
Three times a year.
Fourth, it's the fourth Monday, fourth Monday, thank you, Noah, of every month.
Thank you. You all set?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.